Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Monday, November 1st, 2021. Council will continue to meet in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage all speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually as there will be limited number of seats available in our council chambers. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell's Hoover, Allen Hill, Oxford, and Pitt educated. I am the GIS candidate for Pittsburgh America 2021. I have a letter here from the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, it's a letter of inquiry about me now. The American Philosophical Association is something which I joined in the early 2000s, you know, for clarity of speech. Concern of city council is the permissibility and impermissibility of citizen's speech. Counsel on speech and public comment. Quote, "We do not permit profanity." Kale Smith, Lavelle. One, no definition of profanity is provided by counsel on for public comment, PC. Two, no list of words or expressions that are not permitted in PC is provided by counsel. So Kale Smith, Burgess, Lavelle can arbitrarily identify any word as impermissible. Three, no rule exists regarding profane speech of counsel. Four, no ordinance on permissible or impermissible speech that has been passed by this council exists. Five, the city office of solicitor can find no legal foundation for the council ban on profane speech. Six, no ground for enforcement, no specifications for procedures for dealing with it. Seven, no ground for not permitting profanities in non-American languages. And there is ground for permitting profanity since the council has already done that with the F-word in public comment, which some consider to be a piece of profanity. Therefore, the Pittsburgh council, in my view, is using the anti-profanity claim to illegally control citizen's speech, what I call speechism. Speechism plus racism, ethnocentrism, sexism, August through November 2021 via public comment. In the public record, I have identified patterns of racism, ethnocentrism, sexism, and speechism in the public actions of the council and the mayor, all of whom are members of the Democratic Party. Pittsburgh mayor and councilor, all the P, Pittsburgh mayor or councilor actions show racism, ethnocentrism, sexism, and speechism. Therefore, the Pittsburgh DP signifies R-E-S-X-S-P-isms. Therefore, any Pittsburgh DP candidate for council or mayor signifies all of the above regardless of race, ethnicity, sex, gender, or speech. And therefore, the 2021 Pittsburgh DP candidate for mayor, Mr. Gani, represents racism, ethnocentrism, sexism, and speechism.
Our next registered speaker is Natasha Washington, whom I do not believe we have online with us.
My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street, Square Hill. When you look at the role of mayor, you're looking at concept. What is the concept of what government should do to help the average citizen? What part should we play in the daily life of our citizens? And so I've put together a little platform of what it means to me. But first, I want to discuss the three candidates of note. Ed Gani, Mr. Moreno, and of course, myself. And I want to draw a difference as to just what exists. Has either of them ever written a program that was passed through this room and approved and has brought in a million, over a million dollars and is still producing money? The answer is no. Who did? I did. I am the person who knows how to write those programs. Concept is important. I think there's possibly $8 million of non-tax revenue that should be collected, and it's being going ignored and was not followed up by Mr. Paduto. Now let's look at concept, this little platform I put together. I hope it shows in the camera. Write me in for mayor. Don't worry about the ballot. The important thing is to get someone in the office who can really think a little bit and do something that's different because we know that the violence is going to continue to rise if we don't do something to satisfy not only the African-American community, but the rest of the community. So let's look at platform. Clean water. Why would I put clean water in a platform? Well, you can't raise a child on lead-loaded water. And when the storms hit, there's no place to put the water. But guess what? I found one. I know where we can put it and treat it and put it back into the river so that we don't have polluted water. Number two, significant childcare. Well, if we don't take care of the kids, they grow up like wild animals. We see a lot of it on the South Side, don't we? The problems of excessive drinking, sex, and so on. Housing, well, that's a given. But we continue down, and after you add up all six, you get to number seven. This reduces, this total program reduces violence. I thank you for your time. Remember, write in Les Ludwig.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Ms. Mullen, are you with us?
Hello, hello. You can hear me now? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. It must be a lady's last policy because I registered on the 28th to speak today. Anyway, shady trees, not shady deals in valet. The state, Pennsylvania State Constitution says, "All power is inherent in the people, and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness." Where did elected officials get the idea that they are lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? How can Gregory Coyle sit smugly at a town hall meeting in opposition to we, the property owners of valet? His response about the parking issue at the building is that the mayor is not going to require it. Is Mayor Paduto his best buddy? No wonder the mayor is on his way out. Our community is not his to make and mold to his will. We, the people of valet, do not consent to this threat to our peace, safety, and happiness. Official oppression has consequences. Significant community concern has been expressed to the Board of Education and city council these months since the announcement of the sales agreement for valet school. Perhaps there is a neighborhood busting plan afoot. Blockbusting is illegal. Is there any lobbying or unregistered lobbying taking place? Are any special friends of Bill Paduto involved in this non-compliance sale? My sincere, consistent request is that city council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace valet school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in valet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus.
Good afternoon. Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus, Executive Director, Women for a Healthy Environment, based in East Liberty. I'm speaking today in reference to the Pittsburgh Lead Safe Law ordinance that was introduced. As you know, lead poisoning is a centuries-old problem across this country, and in particular in the Northeast. And Pittsburgh is no exception. We have an aging infrastructure, and 85% of the homes in the city were built before 1978, which is the year that lead was banned from paint. The only way forward to addressing lead poisoning across our communities is prevention, and we'll speak a little bit about that today. As you may know, this is an environmental justice issue and a racial justice issue. The Pennsylvania Department of Health had indicated in a recent report of December 2020 that children who reside in black and brown communities in Allegheny County had six times the rate of lead poisoning as children in predominantly white communities. We know that there is no safe level of lead, and it causes lasting harm to children's bodies, their brains, their behaviors. We've seen lower IQ, impacts to speech, hearing, and language development, muscle and bone growth. The list goes on. And this list is not only applicable to children, but to adults as well. The Pittsburgh Lead Safe Law is designed, the way that it's designed is based on the premise that we must prevent kids from being exposed to lead in common sources, those that we know of through science, in the paint, in the dust, in the soil, and in the water. The intent of this ordinance, like many other cities across the country, is to prevent that exposure before the poisoning happens. We know, based on data that is collected by the Allegheny County Health Department, that over 400 children in the Pittsburgh metro area in Allegheny County essentially are lead poisoned every year. And that number has held true, and it's held steady. So now's the time to take action. Our team has learned from cities across the country. We've worked with the city council now with all of you for nearly two years on an ordinance, and we've learned that we have primary prevention strategies that can be put into place and that are effective. So what we have on the table needs to be comprehensive, effective, and implementable. And this ordinance was designed specifically for Pittsburgh. We look forward to working with city council to create not a good, but a great law for Pittsburghers, and especially for our children. As you may know, just last week, the CDC had lowered their lead reference level, meaning that when a child is identified as lead poisoning, it's at five micrograms per deciliter and higher, which is the level that they find in the blood when the blood is taken from the child via venous draw. That number last year was lowered to 3.5. So we know now that we're going to see a greater number of children impacted by and identified with lead poisoning across the city. This is an urgent, urgent issue that we have to address now. So last week's award, you may have heard during the Lead Summit, was established in honor of Dr. Herbert Needleman. Dr. Herbert Needleman was a P.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ashley Hamilton.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Hamilton. I'm a longtime Northside resident of Pittsburgh. Thank you for the time to speak today. The city of Pittsburgh recently announced in a press release the award of the street lighting upgrade project to the Efficiency Network, also known as TEN, and a subsidiary of Duquesne Light. I have concerns surrounding the timing of this decision and ultimately, the decision-making criteria that was applied to this project. I question if a company owned by the local power company can be an objective party that has this best interest at hand. I see an approach that lacks inclusion of community voices and involvement. Lighting applied on a neighborhood basis will affect walkability and safety, the value of a neighborhood, and success of its small businesses. One size does not fit all. Next, I'd like to know what qualifications TEN has to deliver on a project of this scale. It appears their largest project to date is half the scope of Project Pittsburgh's Street Lighting Project. I have direct knowledge of the competing bid for the street lighting project, and it's my understanding that the competing company, Dalkia Solutions, has delivered dozens of citywide lighting conversions of similar or larger size to the city of Pittsburgh. Additionally, Dalkia Solutions proposed a timeline of 18 months versus the 30-month rollout proposed by TEN. The competing company, Dalkia Solutions, proposed a cost of $12 million versus $16 million that was proposed to TEN, that was awarded to TEN. That's a $4 million difference. I understand Dalkia Solutions proposed a smart design that would achieve a 20% higher efficiency savings to the city. And I know that Dalkia Solutions offered a community-guided design as part of their proposal, elements of which don't appear to be in TEN's contract offer. I believe it's the responsibility of this council to better understand TEN's qualifications, community involvement, and reasoning behind investing $4 million more than another highly qualified offer. Last, a new administration will be in place two months from now and effectively have ownership of this rollout. Has the new administration been informed of these competing bids? What could they accomplish with an additional $4 million in their budget? The decision to award this contract now and add a premium to the competing bid feels intentionally rushed by the current administration. I've spoken with several community members who feel that city residents deserve to know the justification behind this award decision for what appears to be a $4 million higher contract to TEN, a company less qualified and with a lesser scope than the services offered by Dalkia Solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Kevin Quisenberry.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Quisenberry. I'm the litigation director with the Community Justice Project, which is a nonprofit law firm in the Pennsylvania Legal Aid Network. I work here in our downtown Pittsburgh office. And my comments today are made on behalf of myself and my organization and the Get the Lit Out Pittsburgh campaign. My comments focus on the Pittsburgh Lead Safety Law introduced by council last Tuesday. This is a really important bill, and we commend you for taking swift action to introduce it on Tuesday morning. However, there are significant changes that were made to the bill before introduction that seriously limit the bill's effectiveness in preventing lead exposure and lead poisoning. And I want to highlight the key problems and ask you to hold the bill for one week to correct these problems. First, as introduced, the lead inspections required by the bill will only happen via the city's proposed rental registry program. This has the effect of eliminating inspections for lead hazards in child-occupied facilities, which is extremely important and has always been a key element of the bill. In addition, the current bill limits lead inspections to the periodic three-year inspections proposed in the rental registry program. Instead of this, PLI should inspect for lead hazards in pre-1978 rental dwellings and child-occupied facilities whenever PLI inspects these properties, as the bill was originally intended. Second, under current language in the bill, the lead inspection protocols of the ordinance are, quote, "not to exceed applicable law," and this is a major problem. Under this provision, because there is no other applicable law that already requires inspection for lead hazards, the lead inspection provision of the Pittsburgh Lead Safety Law may be effectively nullified. Third, with the revisions made to the ordinance, the city excluded itself from having to ensure that renovations, repairs, and painting in its own facilities are conducted in an EPA-certified lead-safe manner. This is also a problem. Fourth, by removing the general enforcement provision of the proposed Pittsburgh Lead Safety Law, there's now no mechanism to enforce compliance with the demolition and RRP requirements in the ordinance. And then finally, if at all possible, this ordinance should include financial assistance or incentives to help homeowners and small landlords make repairs that address lead hazards. If income and property tax incentives as originally proposed are unavailable, then the city should just create a fund using CDBG, American Rescue Act, Plan Act funds, or a combination of sources. And of course, we can help later approach philanthropy to leverage any public funds. In conclusion, on behalf of myself, my organization, and the Get the Lit Out Pittsburgh campaign, I ask council today to hold this bill for one week, amend it to correct for these problems, and once corrected, enact this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for council? Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Caldwell.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 57.
Bill 57, ordinance, amend in the city of Pittsburgh Code of Ordnance, Title II, fiscal Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 237, the city of Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund to conform with the Home Rule Charter, Article IX, in order to establish the creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund.
I'd like to make a motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Opposed?
I don't even know what I'm voting on.
I would, I would, I would.
I cut this here.
So with my, whatever the, whatever the body is, I can explain. We had, we have a committee meeting, and we, I do agree with the hold. My thought was to amend and then hold, for at least we're all working on the same basic idea, which is the same thing we did on the Stop the Violence Fund. Exactly the same thing, requiring annual thing of council, and then we can hold for as long as you want. Does that seem like a fair compromise?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, we're, we're having discussion on a motion to hold. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I didn't think there was discussion on a motion to hold, firstly, when I ordered. So, Mr. Chair, are you, what are you doing with that?
With our parliamentarian to see if the we actually could, but so, can we?
Me checking the rules.
Get the playbook out. We're gonna check the rules.
I have no idea.
Somebody's gonna throw a flag here.
I just, I don't, I don't understand. It doesn't matter to me. So let me not, let me not.
We're still discussing.
We're, we're good in clarity. I thought you couldn't have discussion on the hold, but we're going to get clarity. I was asked to get clarity.
Not in the rules of council, it's in... I know, I know the answer, but I, nobody asked me.
In the dark. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, just everybody.
Flying blind, he's flying.
Yeah, I mean.
That's why I said, let's have the conversation. I thought is to have a conversation, then hold. That makes sense?
I still hear discussion at the table, and I'm wondering what's happening, Mr. Chair.
So we were, myself and our clerk, were going through our rules of council to see if...
So what we can do is like get our parliamentarian, which is legal, in order to let them opine if you want to move forward to the next bill, and then we can get clarity on the, from legal.
We, we can finish them, which I still think is easier just to have the conversation because we have nothing to hide. And I just have the conversation.
So, if we can, let's move on to the next bill. We will come back and revisit this. We'll ask legal to weigh in.
Yep.
Based upon reading our rules of council, it's debatable whether or not we can or cannot have rules of council. It doesn't say that we cannot have discussion on a motion to hold. It does speak to other motions, but not specific to a motion to hold, but we'll ask law for clarity so we'll know moving forward. And with that, we'll move on to the next bill, and we'll come back to this after we've gotten an opinion from our law department. So our new paper is Bill 2091.
Bill 2091, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a warrant, two warrants with a total sum of $495,000, which shall be allocated and paid as follows: $200,000 made payable to Brandon Furman and $295,000 made payable to Tucker Aronsberg in final settlement related to litigation.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held for executive session. That takes us to invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the intro departmental transfers.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Caldwell. One deferred paper, Bill 1744.
Bill 1744, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a lease agreement with the Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Garden for the city facility known as the Garden Center for a period of 10 years and annual rental fee of $1 per year, with the possibility of renewal.
Motion for a brief discussion.
Approve.
Well, motion to approve and a brief discussion. I just really want to check with Councilwoman Strasburger because she held this previously.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Caldwell.
I just want to defer to Councilwoman Strasburger. She had held this. I just wanted to make sure she was okay with proceeding today.
Thank you, Councilman. We need to continue to hold this. Unfortunately, we are in negotiations with Phipps Conservatory, and we need a little bit more time. So I request a two-week hold, please.
Motion to hold for two weeks. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held two weeks. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 2072.
Bill 2072, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to receive a grant from Keep America Beautiful to implement a cigarette litter prevention program and cigarette litter stand placement in the amount of $15,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it was recommended. Bill 2073.
Bill 2073, Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with the Efficiency Network for Services Related to the City Streetlight LED Conversion that'll cost not to exceed $16 million.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm, I'm good.
I'd like to... Discussion, Councilman Wilson, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I'd like to have, I believe I was, request Angie Martinez and Director Lucas to the...
Would come to the podium and provide your name and title for the record.
Request to come to the podium.
Right. Kim Lucas, Acting Director for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Hi, Angie Martinez, Senior Ride-A-Buy Manager with Domi.
All right. So I guess who, I'll ask the question, and whoever would like to answer, that'd be great. So we have this... All right, um, so I guess who, I'll ask the question and whoever would like to answer, that'd be great. So we have this, um, so previously, if you could just familiarize us, there was a, a previous effort to undertake this, uh, lighting replacement. And, and can you just explain that, that brief history of what? Like, why, like, why are we at this place now where there was something that was happening in twenty eighteen and now we're at this place with a new, uh, contract?
Sure, um, I'll go ahead and, uh, give that a shuddered answer. Um, so in twenty eighteen, there was an RFP that was released um, for smart streetlight LED conversion. Um, that project was not awarded. It did go through some, you know, selection committee, um, but the, uh, the contract was not awarded and, um, I do not believe that um, there's any authorization for it. Um, we began the process of issuing an RFP um, this year for an LED conversion, um, last spring. Um, we undertook a completely new process, um, starting from the very beginning. Um, I was not personally involved in the twenty eighteen version of the RFP, but I can speak to what we did, um, in twenty-twenty-one. So what we did is we formed a collaborative committee across several departments, um, a working group, if you will. Um, that was staffed by myself and one other from DOMI, um, which is the department that's going to be holding the contract. Um, we also included representatives from OMB, Office of Sustainability and Resiliency, because there's an energy and a greenhouse gas um, uh, emissions component of the project, as well as representatives from IMP who could sort of act as um, advisors in those sort of, uh, more technical areas. Um, that working group got together. We, um, reviewed RFPs for LED conversions done in other cities. Um, we did a survey and, you know, some cold calls to other cities who have, uh, done this type of progress or project recently. Um, we went through the steps of writing the RFP, um, and, uh, sending it through our leadership committee, which was a higher level body of all of those representative departments, um, before we even got to the point of releasing the RFP. Um, so we took a lot of care into making sure that it is a, you know, the type of project that the city needs. Um, we received seven responses, uh, qualified responses. We did, um, a RFP scorecard, um, evaluating those, got a shortlist to five, did five interviews, further shortlist to, um, two finalists, um, did follow-up interview or follow-up written questions and, um, called references from other cities and then made a recommendation, uh, to the leadership committee to offer to ten.
Who were the two finalists?
Um, Dalkeia and the Efficiency Network.
And were there, um, can you clarify the difference between, uh, what we're seeing at council here for sixteen million? And, um, language like not to exceed contract, like in the contract not to exceed, and then also, um, can you clarify the cost proposals of each, uh, of the two finalists?
Sure, um, so the cost proposals, um, were submitted to the city using a template that we actually put together and asked respondents to fill out, um, giving us the, uh, their estimate for, um, units. Um, and then, you know, work needed, needing to be done for the planning and design. Um, so we took care to make sure we were doing an apples-to-apple comparison of all of the cost proposals we received. Um, the RFP, um, was, uh, has sort of two facets to it. The first is a, um, conversion of the thirty-five thousand high-pressure sodium lights to LED. And then there's other po- components of the RFP where we asked for respondents to, um, submit to us uh, proposals to sort of expand on the work that could be under this contract. Um, we called those add alternates and, um, that, that gave, uh, the people who were responding to, uh, the request, the opportunity to propose things like a more robust community engagement, a network lighting management system, update to city code, uh, the lighting code. So things that we weren't necessarily requiring for them to respond to as a part of the RFP, but things that they thought, you know, being technical experts in the, you know, in the realm of municipal lighting might bring value to the project. And so all of the proposals came back within a range of, um, providing sort of a baseline for just the straight LED retrofit and then additional budget for those add alternates, um, add-on tasks that we might choose to authorize, um, once we actually get into the contract.
Okay, um, just to further clarify to pinpoint my question. So there's been some public comment made about, you know, we're he, we're seeing sixteen million here, um, in front of us for the agreement, uh, with ten. And there was public comment made about, um, that this was like four million dollars higher than, than, uh, another finalist. Can you clarify what's going on here?
Sure. So the cost proposal that ten submitted to us actually had, um, a baseline, uh, proposal of nine million dollars for the straight LED conversion and then, um, additional for a network lighting management system, um, update to lighting code, more robust, um, community engagement strategy. Um, the Dalkeia proposal had a baseline of twelve million, uh, for the LED conversion. Um, but they were able to add some additional tasks, um, uh, within their proposal that would have, uh, so I, I think if I could explain this another way, I'm sorry, um.
I can also jump in too.
Yeah, if you want to.
So just to say it another way, we received multiple proposals, each of which had a range because of the base services that we're contracting for and different elements with regards to public engagement, et cetera. So the sixteen million dollar figure, isn't that ten gave us a proposal and said sixteen dol- sixteen million dollars to do everything that's scoped out? We identified sixteen million as the appropriate amount to come to council with based on our government estimate for the base services and the additional public outreach component.
So sixteen million was a dummy. That wasn't a request that, uh, ten, that wasn't their.
Correct. They submitted a range of costs and we identified which ones were most critical to the core of the project.
Okay, um, so if Dalkeia was the one that was chosen, you would still choose sixteen million for today?
Yes, and, um, if Dalkeia was the, uh, choisen, chosen consultant, um, they submitted to us a proposal that gave us a range between twelve and nineteen million dollars. So they showed that there was some additional value add beyond the base of the LED conversion, uh, that could be considered in the project.
Okay, well, my last call, question is just like, so what is the, the contract for then, right now, with, with ten?
The contract is for the conversion of the thirty-five thousand LED, uh, streetlights to high-pressure sodium, as well as some of the initial study that needs to be done in order to spend the ARP funds for, uh, new streetlights where there are currently none.
And the estimated cost for that is?
I'm sorry?
And the estimated cost for that is?
Uh, the estimated cost for the new lights, we do not know until we actually go through the study to identify the number of lights to be installed. And then as a part of that, also the number of new poles or additional infra, supportive infrastructure that might um, need to be installed with it. Um, I will say that when we went through the process of, um, putting together the request for the ARP funds, uh, we based that off of fifteen thousand new lights, which we arrived at that number by doing some analysis, but that analysis will need to be um, rerun, um, done in greater detail by the consultant.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering my questions whenever, uh, you know, there was some outreach to me about, uh, the four million discrepancy or the difference, I should say, uh, wanted to take that seriously and ask those questions. So thank you.
You're welcome. May I just respond also to a question we received via email, just to address it here as well? There was a question about the cost savings that we anticipate, um, having as part of doing the streetlight conversion and the timing of when we would expect to see those cost savings come into place. Do you want to talk a little bit about that or I can? Continue. So we expect there to be cost savings, not only in the cost of energy consumption, because LEDs use less energy than high-pressure sodium, but also in the maintenance. So high-pressure sodium lights have a useful life of, I believe, two to three years. Um, LEDs have a ten-year lifespan. And so we anticipate those monthly checks that we currently pay in a contractor to go out to look at every single light every single month and we pay for that touch. We expect to see cost savings with regards to that service. So we're not sure exactly when those cost savings will come into play because it depends on how quickly we can implement the process or the project, but I wanted to share here that that's what we're anticipating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilman Kraus.
Hello, um, I'm, I apologize. I see Director Martinez at the speaker, but I didn't catch the name of our second guest at the podium. Who is that? It's hard for me to tell. You look on my Zoom screen, very small. I cannot see who's with Director Martinez.
Kim Lucas, Acting Director for DOMI.
Sorry, Director Lucas, I couldn't figure out, um, that was you on the screen. My apologies. Uh, so I am, um, I, we had a conversation last week where I had a variety of questions. I think I'd like to first confirm my, what I'm understanding is in front of us today. The sixteen thou- the sixteen million dollar authorization today. Um, while it only has a, a two sentences in the text file, you sent a memo for us, um, I think on Friday that says that this bill is just for replacing existing lights.
That is correct.
Okay, so we are not even starting the conversation. It will be in a different authorization in a, an additional twelve million dollar, dollar amount that was allocated in the ARPA budget. On a different day, in a different council session, we will be talking about new lights and adding lights to neighborhoods that I know some council members are very concerned that don't have street lighting currently.
I do want to clarify that as a part of, um, this authorization, um, we will be doing, um, the initial study that needs to be done, uh, to locate new lights, but not actually installing those new lights. So the ARP funds will be authorized separately for X number of lights, um, to be determined, uh, through the study that we're authorizing through this.
Right, and you, you were describing that you had these, um, like a form that all of the people who submitted proposals filled out. So on that part of the form, it said specifically like do a study to locate new locations, I, I expect. That's what it said? We don't have this form that was part of the RFP. It wasn't part of the RFP.
Um, it is available as a part of the, um, submission packet from the response.
We don't have those, do we? I don't believe that you shared those with council.
Um, I am happy to share them, um, now if they were not previously shared.
Good, thank you. So why, I'm just, I'm just trying to do the apples-to-apples things that you mentioned. So this part about doing the study, it came in at about what part of the budget, like how much, how much of the dollars are studying where new lights need to be added?
Um, so I am looking at just, uh, the cost proposal from ten and their combined cost for, um, the survey and conversion plan is less than two hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's to collect any additional data that may not have been, uh, part of the cyclomedia data collection to do the study and then actually doing the, the study for how we would go about, you know, converting thirty-five thousand lights.
Great.
And where, I'm sorry, might be required.
Great, great. So for two hundred thousand dollars, we could get started right away with that study. Absolutely. Um, this bill has another sixteen million, another fifteen million, um, eight hundred thousand dollars that it's appropriating to change the current lights. So am I still understanding this?
Yes, the, the bulk of that is in, um, labor and material to convert lights. Um, I also want to add that part of, um, the operational piece of this project is, um, in restoring or replacing poles, um, that may need to be, uh, upgraded or replaced in order to support, um, the streetlight. There's also a certain amount of wiring and electrical work that needs to go into this project, so.
Only for the current footprint?
Yes.
For the current footprint of where lights are. Okay, so we are gonna get to the point where we help the neighborhoods with, who have inadequate lighting. But that's not here, except for the two hundred thousand dollar part, which is to do the study. And then, um, it additionally, again, according to the memo, which the public doesn't have, I assume that was sent to members on Friday, it says that, um, this company, the Efficiency Network that is called acronym ten, will be tasked with negotiating, uh, new utility electric terms with Duquesne Light, because as, um, we were told last week in our conversation that Duquesne Lights, our current contract is, um, fixed per unit. It is not metered. So even if we, if we had a magic wand right now and switched all of these streetlights to LED, you know, next month, we'd pay the exact same thing that we did last month. That's currently true, correct?
Um, yes, uh, I can, we have somebody from OMB who can answer that question directly.
So what I'm told is that, you know, we are, we have a current contract for utility purch- or for electric purchasing and that, um, there's no way to bring down that payment, um, no matter, even if we turned all the electric, streetlights off today. We just turned them all off and never turned, and didn't turn on the streetlights for a month, we'd still pay the exact same amount that we paid last month.
Your understanding is correct. The city is locked into a per-unit rate for, with our energy supplier based on the number of streetlights we currently have as a part of converting to a more, um, energy-efficient streetlight. Um, in order to actually recognize those energy savings where we would need to, um, negotiate that rate with our energy supplier. So that, that piece of, um, that's a important piece of the contract for us to actually recognize the energy savings and it's something that is doable. Um, it's just a, another piece, a, another task that needs to be complete in order to, um, you know, fulfill the project objectives.
And, um, the, and when did we enter this current contract with Duquesne Light?
Um, this is Assistant Director Jennifer Olzinger, OMB. Um, Councilwoman Gross, to answer your question regarding that, we are actually, uh, speaking with them now. We have a meeting with, um, Grant Irvin, Ben Smith from Law, uh, NRG, which is the current supplier, uh, to Duquesne Light, uh, to talk about that amendment and negotiations. And ten will be, uh, involved in those discussions and help, um, help the city negotiate, uh, those better terms, uh, with that amendment that will be coming probably, uh, in the next couple of months to council.
You've already included in negotiations.
So they will be included when, we, the first meeting is just with the, our current contractor.
I thought I, I heard you say that ten had already been at the table.
They will be tasked with helping us negotiate that, of that amendment as part of their role.
Help me with that part then. Okay, so we'll all agree, well, there's no cost savings unless we renegotiate this contract. We have to renegotiate this contract so that there's then some kind of metering that actually says how much energy we're using that that energy has some kind of relationship to how we get billed. But when they, when we all sit at the table, this resolution um, allows the administration to contract ten to represent the city in those negotiations. Did I say that right?
Not necessarily represent us, but advise us.
Okay, I think the memo that we were sent says that, um, ten would be negotiating. Um, I'll have to double-check that. But, and so, I'm kind of figuring out who this, this organization is. This, the Efficiency Network is actually a subsidiary of Duquesne Light Holdings. And so if they're on our side of the table, right, if we invite, if we invite, but we allow this contract to go forward and, and ten is either sitting next to us on our side of the city table or is there, you know, in place of us at the city table. And then across the table is Duquesne Light, aren't we just allowing Duquesne Light to talk to Duquesne Light? And how is that advantageous to the taxpayer?
So.
Contract, I'm sorry, I found the language. The contract awardee, so ten, will renegotiate the monthly unit rate. Is what, uh, is the, what the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, um, memo was sent to council this week.
Um, those are, that was my language, so I'll take responsibility for it. Um, they will be working with the city and representing our interest when we. when we have those discussions with our energy supplier, Direct Energy, which is a different entity than Duquesne Light, which is a, you know, a utility that is regulated by this PUC. Further, I, I want to, you know, address the question of the relationship between Duquesne Light, the utility, and TEN, which is a separate entity. They are sister companies or affiliates under Duquesne Light Holdings, which also owns DQE, I believe, and does, does work, you know, in the region. So they are separate, there are PUCs that are in place to ensure that there's a separation between the work that TEN would be doing from what Duquesne Light needs to do, and the standards they need to uphold and compliance for being a regulated utility.
So, they are sister organizations or subsidiary, there's arms-length, and that makes you comfortable enough that they'd be sitting on both sides of the table? There's arms-length organizations.
I, I.
Seems curious to me still, I'm sorry, but it seems, seems kind of curious.
We also have confidence, right, we also have confidence in our process and our research and our scope of services that we will do as an internal department in coordination with our partners and other departments to ensure that we are pursuing the most advantageous rate for the city, based on best practices that we're seeing in other cities.
Right, so that, that's, that's the conversation about rates. Now let's talk about the actual LED lights, and, and this company's record with them. So, this bill, again, is not doing anything more than spending two hundred thousand dollars to do a plan for where lights are needed. But is, this bill does authorize the spending of fifteen million, eight hundred thousand to replace current lights only. And, we have, you know, not had much time, we saw this bill come over last week. Council has not had a briefing, we've just done a little bit of looking into it ourselves as, as an office. And my office looked up kind of where TEN has done other projects. You said that in researching and reviewing all of the proposals, you also had a task force that looked into, you know, how well these have turned out. So for example, I believe that TEN is just finishing a replacement of the streetlights in Cleveland, and I'm looking at the Cleveland19.com news outlet that says Cleveland's streetlights malfunction causing strobe effects. They have a video listed that I won't show you on camera, but it could. The lights on Superior Avenue between Eighteenth and Twenty-Sixth all in unison started strobing an entire city block. Maybe two, maybe more than city blocks. And there are reports also of the streetlights actually completely going dark. And these are the TEN, this is the Efficiency Networks project in Cleveland this year. Can you speak to why, you know, what concerns you have, and what you thought when you saw this?
Sure, I do, my familiarity with the Cleveland conversion, or my understanding, I should say, is that TEN did not have the same project management role as they will in the proposal that we, that we have written. The Cleveland model, I believe they had already pre-selected a fixture. They were using camera technology and other sort of smart nodes as a part of that project, which are not included in the project we're talking about. So, it was a different sort of system and a different level of effort than TEN will be doing for the city of Pittsburgh. We did speak with references in Harrisburg, where TEN did a municipal streetlight contract, or municipal streetlight LED conversion. Though, that reference came back very strong. TEN also, one of the things that sort of made them stand apart from some of the other responses is that they have done conversions in the state of Pennsylvania, Bethlehem, Scranton, and Harrisburg, which we thought, you know, was a sort of unique thing out of the other responses we received, to have that more local experience. And, and as well as, you know, the size of the, the cities and number of streetlights being comparable as well.
So what brand of streetlights would be used here?
We will not know that until we go through the task one in the RFP, which is TEN working with the city to look at a selection of options, and then selecting one or two models to, to use. TEN is brand agnostic, which means they're not, you know, affiliated with any one manufacturer. They'll bring us, you know, several options to the table for us to consider. They will also, as a part of the project, do some real-life demonstrations of street lighting, so that there's a sense of what streetlights actually look like when they're installed before we make the investment in selecting one model or, or type.
Thank you, and, so, so we are, I just want to make sure I hear you say this clearly, so you are not going to include camera technology in this project?
That was not a requirement of the, the RFP. That was not expressed as interest by the city in any of the conversations that we had. I cannot say.
Yes, I think it, I'm really, I'm waiting for a yes or no. I think you need to say, just straight up, just say it clearly.
And frankly, the budget isn't there for it either, right?
Yeah, I didn't hear that you are not putting cameras in.
We are not putting cameras in.
Thank you, thank you, I thought it was important to get that stated, I think, forthrightly. And so, so, there are no cameras. But even in other cities that didn't have cameras, I, what we're reading is that, and I apologize, you know, we, again, I feel like this is being a little rushed on the public side. And so we're, we're trying to figure out this technology in the, in the, in the current real-world examples. So the last time it came to the table in 2018, we didn't have much discussion about the technology per se. We talked about how TEN was not the right organization to go with. It's three years later now, you're bringing TEN forward again. But in the meantime, there have been many other cities that have actually tried out this technology. So I think, you know, that's what we were looking for when I was kind of clicking around last week. Uh, and so, I think in Detroit, it wasn't a TEN project, but it was also the actual lights failed. And so there was, the, and it was, I think they were suing the manufacturer and having to do replacements. Did you, did you have concerns about particular brands of these LED lights?
Um, not concerned with the particular brand. I will say that the warranty is incredibly important to us because we are going to own and maintain these streetlights, once they're turned over to the city. As a part of the contract, we will give manufacturers warranty for any equipment, that's a minimum of ten years. Some offer twelve, as well as three years of warranty for the labor and work performed by the contractor. So if there's.
I think we do need to be concerned with which manufacturer of LED lights is picked because it looks like some have a bad track record.
We agree, and as part of our market research, we do have some preliminary data on that, and we'll absolutely be focused on that, especially as the department that will be responsible for ongoing maintenance. We will, we obviously care a lot about making sure that we're selecting a product that has proven its ability.
Right, it seems like in Detroit, they went dark. Prematurely dimming, burning out, and having to be replaced. Twenty thousand of the lights. How many are in our projected replacement, twenty-six thousand?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, and in Detroit, twenty thousand of them had to be replaced. And so we'll want to make sure that we're not on the hook for replacing nearly a hundred percent, you know, or, you know, seventy percent of our lights after putting them in. And it was just a few years, is what I'm seeing in media from the Detroit News this year. So, there seem to be reliability problems, right? So there's a promise that, oh, these are gonna last ten years, and it's great. And so you won't have the maintenance costs, you can save all this money, but if they fail, then you have an even worse replacement schedule than with the current lights, who's, I can never remember the full technical name of, the HSP. So that's bad, because it's just not living up to its promise. All right, so let's move on, so I believe, I think my point here is this is still just unreliable technology. And, and so that's concerning. And then, secondly, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I, I think I just want to say that as, there's going to be issues with any large-scale infrastructure upgrade. I don't think that LEDs are less reliable than high-pressure sodium lights, and the maintenance of our existing system is, you know, it, it's taxing on us because of the age of the infrastructure, as well as the technology. So, we, you know, we will put forward thought into, you know, making sure that we select the most dependable, reliable, sustainable, and practical system for us to maintain.
Is that, have you done?
Yeah, that's it.
Fine, yeah, so I am concerned about some of the maker manufacturers. I'm definitely concerned that the ones that, you know, were not probably the same manufacturers in Cleveland as in Detroit, but both sets failed, and so we'll want to know that for sure. And cost millions of dollars to fix, you know, and so, we want to make sure to avoid those problems. I want to move on then, from, from the liability and, and, you know, manufacturer defects to just the, do, do people actually want LED lights? And I know that you put out a survey on Engage, I'm sorry, I don't see the results from that. I feel like we haven't had enough discussion about this. I know Mayor Perdido has been intending and wanting to do this and, and putting this as part of his platform for many years now. But again, that, it has actually rolled out some places. And so instead of just being a concept, we have some real-world experience. And so with the LED lights being brighter, being whiter, you get negative feedback, in fact, grave concerns from people who are getting older, like myself. We start to have night vision issues, right, and so you have glare. I think Councilman Burgess has spoken before about how he doesn't drive at night for these issues. So it's, it's, you know, that every light creates a kind of a ring of glare around it as you're driving. And so, these lights are worse than the current lights in that respect. Similarly, because of their brightness, which is supposed to be a virtue, is touted by the industry as a virtue, even if you're not driving a car, if you're walking, and they have these very discreet pools of light, where they shine and where they don't, right? And that's kind of a, a feature of the technology. That people get night blindness because you're, you're walking into bright light. You know how it is when you're in a dark room, and if you shine a bright light and then turn it off, you can't see. And so, and that's deeply concerning and, and a, a negative feature. Let alone, we have installed some four thousand LED lights now over the years with our current contractor, and many of them were removed because people just hated them, right? So like, the city put in an LED light on South Millville Avenue, and then, in Boomfield where I represent, between Penn and Friendship, and people hated it. And I think it started to strobe, didn't it, and you had to replace it, and you put back the old technology? We talked about it a little bit last week, I think.
Just to answer for the group, you're right, that the LEDs, the older LEDs and current ones in place are four thousand to seven thousand Kelvins in terms of their color correlated temperatures, which are bright. And that's responsible for creating shadows and glare and some of the vision-related problems that you just described. One of the benefits of having had a few years from the last time a request for proposals was submitted to now is having those market research case studies come to fruition that we're able to look at and base best practices off of. So with this contract, the technical specifications will be less than three thousand CCT. So Councilmember Gross, you just mentioned current lights are four thousand. The ones as part of this installation will be less than three thousand to be Dark Skies compliant, and we will be retrofitting existing LEDs that currently are in that higher range that are the stark, bright, white, bluish range, and reducing the color temperature to reduce the problems that you were just describing.
Yeah, can you give me an example of cities where they've used the warmer tone and the lower Kelvin of three thousand, I think you said? And so we can look and see if citizens actually like those?
Um, I can find out for you what municipalities have used that. I am not aware of, Albuquerque, thank you. Albuquerque, New Mexico was one of the case studies that did do the Dark Skies compliant, thirty-five hundred Kelvin CCT. And from our understanding, they were pleased with the outcome of their LED conversion.
Okay, well, I will definitely look into that, I appreciate the one example there. And I think I've asked most of my questions for today, but I, it really brings me to the point that council has not had enough information about these projects. I don't think the public has had enough information about this, this project. I heard quite a bit of media blitz in the past week. You were on the Confluence this morning, and there has been articles out about it. But I don't, I, actually, I should give you the opportunity to talk about one of the very positive features that it looks like you've built in, that is, hasn't been mentioned yet, which is that there's going to be some local jobs training. But I didn't hear a, a full, a full discussion, so if you'd like to, to, to talk about that, that'd be helpful.
Sure, one of the, the strengths of the TEN proposal, the selection committee, you know, was happy about was the workforce development side. And so TEN presented, I think, a very enthusiastic and meaningful participation for meeting and exceeding disadvantaged business goals, as well as doing, building into the project, this workforce development piece. Well, they'll be partnering with A. Philip Roundoff Institute to build up training for things like traffic control, some of the surveying and inventory. There's a lot of jobs that are going to come, a lot of technical skills that are missing in, you know, the existing labor pool, that they're going to work with this institute to, to, to build up those skills so that local residents can share in some of the job creation and, and work that's going to be happening.
That is definitely a positive feature. What portion of the fifteen million, eight hundred thousand is that portion?
Um, I'm not sure I can give you a percentage. I, again, the labor is a huge percentage of the overall project.
I think not so much the ongoing labor, but the kind of training. Right, you said TEN would be handling and partnering with this institute to, to do the recruiting and training for local, like, city residents?
Yes, but that's not called out in the proposal as a specific line item cost. As Angie was saying, it's part of just the labor cost overall.
Oh, I see. Let's see, so we don't know. Let's see, so we don't know if it will be robust or if it will not be robust. We don't know what the scale will be.
Based on the qualitative conversations that we had as part of that interview process where they were able to describe these relationships, we felt that it was substantial.
But you, will you be requiring a substantial amount of residential, like, training of city residents? And um, you know, like a number of candidates, size of classes, anything like that?
That was not a technical requirement as part of the RFP. Um, which is why we were impressed and appreciated the fact that TEN included it as part of their proposal. So I don't know that we can actually put in requirements per se, but we absolutely will have a focus on that in our negotiations.
Okay. Um. Um, I, I, I know that you offered a briefing to members and we haven't had that yet. Which is why I was uh hoping, I talked to a few members before the meeting, that we would. Not take this provisional vote before a briefing. Um, it seems backwards. Um, and so I had hoped that we would hold this bill. I don't know that other members um have that um desire today, but I've taken up a great deal of time and I, I appreciate you answering all my questions. I believe there was another member with questions, so I'll, I'll defer for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, we have Councilman Kraus followed by Councilwoman Strasburger.
I thank you, good afternoon, welcome. Uh, my question really is going to focus, or my questions are going to focus on uh the rollout. Can you, are you able to speak today to prioritization of neighborhoods which uh would see the upgrades? Uh, first, and have you given thought to that?
We have given thought into um the types of criteria that we would um consider in putting together a phasing plan. Um, so critical infrastructure needs, areas where uh based on the um existing condition survey that the contractor will be doing. Where they find, you know, critical unsafe conditions, those need to be addressed immediately. Um, there will be a geographic element to this, um, to make sure that we're putting, you know, crews in places that they can um, you know, do the conversion in an efficient manner. Um, the sort of uh interesting thing here is that the, the time element is not in the actual conversion of the lights. It's really in the planning and the study that happens um in advance. And so um TEN believes that they can convert all thirty-five thousand lights within uh, I think forty-three weeks. Um, that's, you know, contingent on the study and the phasing plan being uh reviewed and accepted by the city. Um, so again, it's the sort of pre-planning, um.
And just to add to that, there also is a community engagement component as part of that phase. So it's not just TEN behind closed doors doing analysis, it's actually talking to the community about some of their requests and expectations.
That was a very long response to a somewhat short question. Can you just speak a little? Less verbose about. Just how we'll go about prioritizing what neighborhoods might see upgrades first. They, um, is not helpful to me. Is they the contractor? Is they a process within DOMI? Who, who actually, can you help me better understand who will actually lead the process by which will determine which neighborhoods would see upgrades first?
It'll be a collective effort, but ultimately the responsibility lies with the department. So DOMI is responsible for the phasing. We will be working closely with our technical experts on their recommendations.
Okay, all right, that's a much better answer, I can. So a cooperation between the, the contractor, um, offering suggestion, if you will. Uh, or recommendation, but ultimate authority lying within the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate. All I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, back, followed by Councilman Cargill.
Thank you, um, Acting Director and Angie, thank you for being here today, being there today. Um, I wanted to see if you can speak to the energy and climate goals that this helps to accomplish for the city.
Sure, um, so just uh in the basis of technology, LEDs are fifty to seventy percent. Um, more efficient than the high pressure sodium lights. Um, I would say the high pressure sodium lights are not efficient at all, they're inefficient. Um, they have a very high burn rate, um, so they, they go through those greenhouse gas emissions. Um, so by converting um to a more efficient um type of fixture, um, we will be reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. Or contribution to those from city streetlights.
And how much do we spend per year um currently? With the streetlights that we, that we do have? I know a portion of them are an old version of LED, but it's a small percentage. So generally, what are we spending per year on everything, the contract, maintenance?
So right now, we spend three quarters of a million dollars in maintenance. So seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in maintenance alone for our streetlight contract. And an additional two point five million in the energy spending.
So given that this will use less energy and they are longer lasting and require less maintenance, we will see savings. We don't know yet necessarily the number of years it'll take, as you said earlier, to realize those, the break even point. But we will see savings each year, is what I gather?
Yes.
All right, those are my questions.
Councilwoman Cargill.
Thank you, uh, welcome Angie, Kim, thank you for being here. Um, it's just two quick questions. Was I buying my Christmas lights early? LEDs are like four times as expensive, at least as the, you know, the original. I understand, you know, ten year lifespan versus a two or four year lifespan. So we're going to have savings there as far as the labor goes. Um, so I'm thinking down the road, ten years from now, when we have to replace thirty-five thousand. What is the cost of a sodium bulb today versus a LED? Do we know?
Um, I did pull some of those numbers, um.
I wish we had an operations manager standing up here because he could tell you immediately, I apologize.
Um, the LEDs are uh more upfront, um, that initial cost. I think part of the issue that we run up against with the um high pressure sodium lights is right now you can't really get them off the market. And so to maintain those lights, where we don't have like a full stock or inventory, inventory, excuse me, of those pieces and parts. We have to constantly kind of uh look for those because they're just not as widely available because the industry is moving to LED. That's where the efficiency is.
Yeah, and I understand that. Um, you know, I, I don't, I know we have, I think, four thousand currently in the city of Pittsburgh. Our complaint ratio on them, is it high? Is it lot or is it few? Do you have any stats on that?
Um, I don't have stats, but you know, anecdotally, I know that, you know, representatives of council have brought to our group concerns with existing LED lights. Um, which is why I'm pleased that we're able to um convert those four thousand existing LEDs to, under this contract, because they do have issues.
Okay, and my main concern, uh, I, I, I feel like this is ultimately a good thing, I'll be in favor of it. Uh, but TEN, the operating company, have they agreed to use all of local labor unions to do these jobs?
They did identify a labor union as part of their hiring strategy. They have exceeded my understanding and had their proposal accepted by the um E O R C. Don't want to mess up the acronym. Um, and so we do think that they have a very competitive package that they've put together for local staffing.
And I've talked to some of the labor unions and I, they relayed that to me as well, I just wanted to hear it from you, you too. So, so, um, yeah, um, big requirement for me is that we're using our local labor and keeping that money in the Pittsburgh area. So, thanks, thanks for being here.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Appreciate it. Um, I do appreciate that the goal is to lower energy costs. But again, that is contingent on the LEDs firstly not failing and then secondly. Um. By having, uh, there, there would be technically energy savings, but the cost savings. Concomitant with the energy savings would have to be negotiated. In this situation where we hypothetically have an arms length. Organization of Duquesne Light on one side of the table negotiating with a arms length. You know, company or subsidiary of Duquesne Light sitting on the opposite side of the table, which gives me pause. I'm still not very confident in, in that uh arrangement uh being the best way to negotiate. Um, a, a rate that we're paying that reflects the hypothetical lower energy use. So it still seems like there's a lot of ifs there, um, and I'm, so I don't feel super confident in that. Um, we know that the promise of LED lights. That the industry goal, the industry um promise is that they um are more energy efficient. Feel free to respond.
Uh, I wanted to just add one additional piece to um the uh comment about the relationship of TEN to Duquesne Light. Um, holdings, um, we did not, you know, include that relationship in our evaluation of the responses. Um, the selection committee arrived at TEN because we feel they, though they are the most qualified firm. However, before we um made the um, you know, official award, we did speak with our city law department. Um, to ensure that there may not be, you know, any potential conflict or um something there that would prohibit us from being able to sit down. And have that um metering and energy savings discussion. Because again, it is a cornerstone to the reason why we're doing the project at all.
I also want to add, and hopefully I don't regret adding it, but of the responsive and responsible proposals that we reviewed. I would say the majority that we interviewed had a relationship with a local company. So whether it was with an energy provider company or whether it was with our maintenance operations company, which needs to also be rebid in the next year. And so in terms of the industry and people who were responsible and responsive to the RFP. Most of them did have some relationship with somebody that we are going to need to have negotiations with. So while in this case, there is some tangential relationship or affiliation rather with one entity. The others were not immune to that sort of similar component.
That's why we ask these questions at the table, so we can all have eyes on the same situations. And so that's, that sunlight uh that is guaranteed in sunshine laws and is in the structure of government is why we ask these questions. So that the citizens can, can know what is, what is happening, right? More, more sunshine on the situation will hopefully um also provide um a guarantee of, of, of propriety. So, yeah, but, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, just in between rounds, I was looking to see if Albuquerque had actually implemented their streetlight replacements. And it's not clear to me that they have. It looks like it was contracted this year, but it's not clear that the project has started. We were saying that there can be a big gap in between when a, a city moves forward with the project and the streetlights actually get in because of the planning and. And design and research that has to happen first. So uh, the latest I see was that a contract was awarded in February of twenty twenty-one. So there's probably no few, I, I'm unaware of that there's any feedback from people in Albuquerque of lights that are at the lower Kelvin and at a warmer color. So if there's any other examples of cities that have actually done what you're proposing we do here, um, that would be helpful. And if you can get that to me, you don't have to have it on the spot now. I think my questions are finished, uh, Mr. Chair, but I, I do have misgivings in moving this uh, you know, contracting award forward today, especially before we have. A fuller briefing and I apologize for taking so much time. These all would have been questions I would have asked in a briefing uh that we probably should have had before standing committee.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Unopposed, uh, motion receives affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our public works committee, so we will now go back to our first bill, uh, which was Bill fifty-seven. For council's uh edification clarification, per our updated rules of council in two thousand sixteen. The only motions that are not debatable are recess, adjourn, table, or a motion to call to question. Any other motion is debatable, including a motion to hold. So with that, with that being said. It was motioned to hold for two weeks by Councilman Cargill. It was seconded by Councilwoman Gross and Reverend Burgess wanted, asked for discussion. And then Councilman Kraus and then.
No, no, please, well. Look, maybe I will. Well, that, yeah.
They can't hear you, Reverend.
We first apologize, Councilman Kraus, and I, I had to go back myself. Um, my background in parliamentary procedures goes back to my high school and college days. When I was a debate coach and a participant in the National Forensic League and the Catholic League and the national, which is now the National Speech and Debate Association. There's an event called um Congressional Debate. And that's how, and I taught it, coached it. But they occur on individual days, they are not a sequence, they're days. So in those events, the motion to hold is treated equally to the motion to table. So in the back of my mind, because it only, it only has one day, so to hold it li- literally means to table it. And so in the back of my mind, that's why there was never a debate on table because that's how the event was done. It is not exactly the same as congressional rules or Robert's rules or worse. So I apologize for all those years of not allowing the motion um to hold be debatable. Because that's my, my background in forensics, kind of back of my mind reminded me not to do that. And so I apologize for that. Um, secondly, my preference is to discuss this. And amend and then hold, I have no problem with the hold, it's just I figured we might as well. Have the discussion on what we're trying, because the, what's presently on the table is wrong with the, 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 the. The numbers are wrong, the format's wrong, so I'm correcting it and then we can have a conversation, we can hold it for four weeks, five weeks, it doesn't matter to me. That's it, so my, my, my thing is to, to, to approve and then discuss and then hold.
Thank you, so we're on the motion, discussion on the motion to hold, Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, thank you very much, so my, my issue is, is, is larger than just this bill alone. It's, it's the um. I don't know, the road we're going down here in terms of communicating with one another. I certainly was in the dark as to what was being discussed in the committee that was formed to, I guess, inform members. As to what actions are being taken so we can uh. Voice our opinion or our vote. Councilman Wilson is, you know, he and I in the sidebar, talking about being out of the communication and not really understanding. Why there appears to be differing factions as to why this should move ahead, why this should be held, why it should be um amended, why it should not be amended. And the councilman and I are. Pretty much flying by the seat of our pants, not understanding how and why the things that are being proposed are even taking place. And that's not how we operate as a council. We've never operated that way, we're, we are much more open and transparent and communicating and discussing these things with one another. So what I didn't appreciate about today was how Councilman Wilson and I kind of fell through the cracks and really had no idea. Why there are these opposing opinions, which ultimately. Let us having to bring a parliamentarian in to decide whether or how we were going to discuss it. I don't want to see that happen.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, Councilman Gross, Councilman Cargill, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I don't feel like I need to call director here to ask this question, but is this literally the bill to incorporate into our code? So that we can then. Use the money that's in the trust fund to pay for parks that's much needed, that, that need the much needed improvement? Anyone, any member even just want to comment on that? I mean, that's.
This is the bill that would create the vehicle for the trust fund to exist.
So how we can literally. Move this across the finish line so we can invest in the parks that are. Like, the whole reason why the public voted for it, even though it was only fifty more percent, whatever the percentage was. We're just going to continue delaying the process of having better parks. I don't, I'm, I'm totally in the dark about this. Like, it, it, it doesn't even, I understand the, whatever was happening with the hold and whatnot, but I represent, like. Someone told me recently I should start saying them and ex- someone told me recently I should start saying them an expensive date, because we got a lot of things we've got to fix up on the North Side. So if we're just going to leave, you know, kick this down the road in another two weeks, and then we're waiting around for, you know, that's going to take another two weeks for the plan or, you know, on how we're going to spend the money. I mean, this conversation is long overdue and we just need to get this done. So as a representative of North Side, there's no way I can vote for this hold when we literally need to just incorporate it into our code. Right now, we're, it's in the charter. So it's in the charter. There's no reason to hold.
Councilman?
I'm done.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Just to process and timing for a minute for Mr. Wilson and for Mr. Kraus. Councilwoman Smith, President Smith has required us as a committee of Councilman Burgess, Councilman Coghill, and myself to get this done this year. In fact, we're supposed to finish up before the end of this month. We are very close and we will, my understanding was that this would not be on the agenda today. It did not have to be on the agenda today. That we would then be briefing you on our suggestions, because that's what we were tasked with. Right? Was to bring back suggestions to council members. And I do have concerns about this language that I barely saw. I think I might have had an email over the weekend or late last week, but not that it was not meant for today's agenda. I didn't read it as closely because we were going to be meeting again to talk more about this proposed language. I'm not comfortable with this language. And to Councilman Wilson's point, yes, there is a change that the voters voted on for home mode charter. It does not match this language in my mind when I'm looking at it here now. So I think we should not amend with this language. That it actually changes the intent of the Home Rule Charter Amendment. So it wasn't meant to be on the agenda today. Therefore, we should hold it. We should not amend. So that's, that's why I wanted to quickly intercede. Councilman Burgess was talking on the motion. He had always for years told us there was no discussion on a motion to hold, which he now clarified is not our rules of council. So I do appreciate that clarification for the future. But I suggest that we just move forward with the hold so we can, we can fix this and we can talk member to member as, as Councilman Kraus requested and as the way I understood President Smith tasked us with. We're very close to be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. And just pointed clarification, this bill was last before us on October 20th. It was held for two weeks at that time, which is why it naturally came back up today. Councilman Coghill.
Okay. Okay. So to your point, Councilman Kraus, I felt that way also with the task force with the ARPA funds. You know, I felt like I was kind of in the dark and that's what task force do, I guess. They go and they behind their heads. But I was uncomfortable in this amendment today because I didn't have a chance. We didn't have a chance to really brief the both of you and whoever else feels like they're in the dark. I thank Councilman Burgess and Councilwoman Gross. I feel like we've had really productive meetings around this. But until you're comfortable with it, you know, as the direction it's going, that's why I motioned to hold for two weeks. In doing so, and Councilman Wilson, you know, I couldn't agree with you more. You have parks that want to be fixed up. We want to get this thing rolling. We are on it. I just feel like we need another two weeks clarify as the direction we're going. So everybody can be well informed. I wasn't prepared to inform you as to the exact direction we're going with this today. I think within two weeks, we will certainly be meeting once or twice before that time. And from there, I hope, you know, everybody's on board and comfortable that we're moving in the right direction. So so that's why I motioned to hold for two weeks and I still stand behind that.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll now move on to second round on the motion to hold. Councilman Wilson followed by Councilman Kraus.
So I represent a district that can't wait. If this is already held two weeks, I think we need to work around the clock to get this done and to the table for passage as soon as possible. I'm not even hearing what the substance is that it doesn't match the charter. Well, let's make it match the charter and move on because we need to get this done. So if someone wants to clarify what the changes are, we can do it out in the open. Maybe we can make the changes now. I mean, should I motion to, you know, would there, is there any people that would entertain a motion to match the language of the charter so we can move on and get this done?
So on the motion to hold.
Yeah.
That's just a, you know, you take that question how you want.
I'm willing to do whatever the body wants.
Councilman Kraus.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Wilson, you're done.
Are you good? So here's my reservation. The, the committee is divided clearly as to how to proceed, which does not give, bring me comfort. And number two, and perhaps more, most importantly, I think most importantly, did you consult law when you wrote the amendment to add the additional language?
So no, but let me sort of, if you want me to tell you how this came about, I can. No one asked me how this came about. Because I didn't write it. So that's, so what happened was I did not call for this bill to be put back on the table. During our committee meeting, I gave a copy of the members of this. All this does is change the number from two, three, seven, two, three, eight. It adds, it adds the language from the actual. This language is not my language, it's the language from the parks.
This is from the referendum?
Yes, it's from the referendum itself. It says basically that this allows other people to put money in it. That's all it does. It doesn't
I can read.
Doesn't change the use of it. It just, it just clarifies that this fund can accept money other than the money we put in. That's the only purpose for it.
That's what I take out of it, but I don't.
And so, and so, and so I did give, this was written by our budget office. I did give it to the committee and said, when it came back up, this would be the template we would work on. And so no one, we didn't, there was never a debate of something different. When this was put on the table today, I did not put it on. It came from the clerk's office with the amendment from the budget office. I said, okay, we'll just make this the working document and hold. It was never my intention to pass it or to rush it. But you need a starting place, and this is a good starting place to have the conversation. But I'm willing to do it in whatever way. It's just that I, I was not, I am, there are times I am the reason that things are moved. In this case, I am an innocent party. I simply, I simply, I'm simply here. And so my thought is, my thought was simply to have something to react to.
Okay, good.
You asked him to respond.
Yeah, yeah, just that, that did we seek legal counsel when we wrote this? And which we did not. It was written by Bill Urbannick or Mike Strellick, one of the two or a combination of both. But it didn't pass legal muster. And given the fact that we are billing in a very, very
Yes.
Very tumultuous sort of contract agreement. Referendum was highly charged. Lots of differing opinion on both sides of it. But as the councilman said, it did win, you know, 50 plus one, it did win. We're going to implement the parking tax, or I mean, forgive me, the parks tax. Mr. Chair, would you, would you be able to clarify this? Monies that are being collected now because tax bills have gone out, I paid my, my parks. Do we have a place to house the monies as we speak? Are they, if we're still in the process of creating a trust fund by which we're going to deposit the funds collected? We are collecting funds. Are we depositing them?
Not into a
Not here.
Trust fund specific for the parks. They would go into our general fund, I believe.
That's not, that's not good. The work needs to happen. The work needs to be done. The trust fund needs to be created. I don't understand how we're getting caught up in, in the minutia of just creating the checking account, if you will, by which it needs to be deposited. So I would, I would scold and charge the committee with assisting us with creating the trust fund by which we can deposit the monies. I'm not going to vote to support a, an amendment today because I don't fully understand the birth of the amendment and why it needs to exist. And I would be willing to hold. But I don't think we need two weeks to figure this out. I think we could, if you want one more week to, to figure this out. And by next Wednesday, damn it, let's make, create the trust fund and deposit the money. Can we do that?
So it's up to the sponsor of the amendment. He currently has a motion to hold for two weeks. He would have
You know, it seems to be the will of the body. If Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Burgess are willing to get together, I guess, in the next week and come up with the language that we need to make you comfortable, I'm willing to hold for just one week if it's okay with the rest of the body. I would have to withdraw my
Yes, withdraw the first.
My motion to hold for two weeks.
Councilwoman Gross, we withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to hold for one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed, it will be held one week.
Thanks, everybody.
That moves us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, first new papers, Bill 2088.
Bill 2088 Resolution Providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with PSI Services Talent Measurement and Education for professional consultant services in connection with police officer recruit candidate examination and selection services and providing for the payment not to exceed $180,000.
Maybe we have 89 too, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Bill 2089 Resolution Providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement or contract with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service MPO ETC Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates and Providing for Payment of the Cost Not to Exceed $190,000.
Motion to approve with brief discussion, please. Thank you, members. I was hoping Director Manuel, Manuel would be here. I'm not sure that she is. If she isn't, that's okay. I would ask members if we could proceed. But I would like to ask the questions if this has a direct impact on, as to when we will be putting, or at least hoping to schedule a new police officer class and when that might occur. But I can, I can certainly have those conversations with the director. I'd be happy to bring it back to members if they wish to to have further information. But for today, I would ask members to please pass.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills both receive affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, first new papers, Bill 2093.
Bill 2093 Resolution Amending Resolution Number 377 entitled Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Apply for Grant Funding from the Allegheny County Department of Community and Economic Developments Act 152 Light Removal Program to Add Language to Allow the City to Decrease the Amount of the Grant and Allow the City to Accept the Grant and to Spend the Funds.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bills recommended. Can we read 94, 95, 96 together, although they all require a separate public hearing?
Bill 2094 Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9 Zoning Code Article 5, Chapter 912 Accessory Uses and Structures, Accessory Use and Structure Development and Operational Standards Parking, Loading, and Access, Alternative Access Plans, Measurements, Setbacks to Update the Standards for Fences and Walls, Parking Paths, and Garages for Residential Uses with Fewer Than Five Spaces, and Other Accessory Uses and Structure. Bill Number 2095 Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9 Zoning Article 5 Use Regulations, Primary Uses, Use Table and Sections, Use Standards, Chapter 912 Accessory Uses and Structures, Section 91204 Accessory Uses and Structure Development and Operational Standards, Use Exceptions and Conditions Not Listed in the Use Table, Special Exceptions, Article 7, 5, 6, Article 6, sorry, Development Standards, Parking, Loading, and Access, Off-Street Parking Schedules to Update the Standards and Definitions for Restaurants and Restaurants Fast Food Uses, and to Update the Standards for Other Drive-Thru Uses Within the City. Bill Number 2096 Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9 Zoning Article 9 Development Review Procedures, Chapter 922 Measurements by Amending Language in Section 92202.
Motion to hold 94, 95, 96 separately on separate dates and times for each of them a public, cable cast public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, all bills will be held. That takes us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one new paper, Bill 2021, 21.
Bill 2121 Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 173 of the City Code Entitled Commission on Naming Public Properties, Powers and Duties Subsection F, City Council hereby names the park created by the I-579 Cap Urban Connector Project which spans over a portion of I-579 Crosstown Boulevard and is bounded by Washington Place, Center Avenue, Chapman Place, Bigelow Boulevard, and includes land to the north of Bigelow Boulevard as Frankie's Pace Park. The area in question occupies a lot block numbers 2B107, 2B257, 2B406, and 2B402.
Motion to hold for public hearing.
Again.
All those in favor say aye. Bill will be held for public hearing. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger, one new paper, Bill 2092.
Bill 2092 Resolution Creating the One-Stop PGH Permitting Technology Trust Fund in which a technology fee collected from applicable one-stop PGH permits shall be deposited. The monies deposited in said trust fund shall be used by participation participating departments to cover expenses associated with the one-stop PGH permitting platform for ongoing maintenance and enhancements to improve customer and user experience.
Motion to approve with discussion. Thank you. I see that we have Director Kinter here to answer questions. So I just wanted to have a maybe not a robust, but at least a transparent conversation here and I think Director Norman as well. So a transparent conversation here about an additional trust fund that we're setting up. If someone can just explain the purpose of the trust fund. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to introduce the conversation. So the trust fund is being set up for 2022 to begin to accumulate fees from the various permits that run through the one-stop PGH system for, for us to begin using it in 2023 to continue maintaining and enhancing the technical computronic system that undergirds one-stop PGH. I will welcome Director Kinter to add any details about the fees and to help answer questions about how the funds will flow and the types of enhancements that we would be looking at supporting in the future. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Director. Councilwoman, if it's okay with you, I can provide a little bit more context or you guys can okay. So council members will see before them soon a fee schedule adopting the annual fees for 2022. And participating one-stop PGH departments, including PLI, are seeking to include a fee to support the one-stop PGH permitting licensing and code enforcement system. The bill before council today proposes a trust fund for council's consideration to direct those funds and guarantee the future funding of the one-stop PGH system. As you know, we've invested a lot of money for this technology system and software as a service requires ongoing maintenance and support. And this is a potential path to ensure that there are minimal revenues that can pay for those annual fees and annual support of the system. Since we have launched, starting with Module 1 in November 2019 for licensing, and our most recent module was code enforcement in May 2020 with permitting and city planning in between there as well. We have had really great user, a huge user base, you know, thousands of customers that are using one-stop PGH and a lot of requests for enhancements and improvements of the system. And we want to ensure that our customers see changes that are beneficial to them ensure that our customers um see changes that are beneficial to them um as well as our staff to improve that system over time.
Thank you both. So um if you can remind us, I think Director Kinter, you're best suited for this, um by 2022, when this fee schedule goes into effect and we'll be collecting funds and depositing to this trust fund, what services will One-Stop PGH cover at that time? Just for the publics and the councils that have been.
Sure, yeah. Um, we have rolled out a few different modules. We now have um all the development agencies, development agencies in the city of Pittsburgh in the same sandbox. So we all work um through One-Stop PGH. It is the place where we intake permits, licenses, dummy applications, zoning and development review applications. Um, and it is also the place where we um manage our code enforcement workflows for complaints that come into 311. It is the warehouse of data that we also output to um places like the um Western Digital PA Center that has a lot of data and uh my favorite Civic Central building I.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up to council colleagues for questions. Is there the extent of my questions? I appreciate you both being here today and um helping to understand that a little bit better.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Clark.
I just have one, one quick question. Um, you know, the way the system One-Stop Pittsburgh set up, uh, it's great. I think it, you know, saves people trips downtown to, you know, congestion, parking, you name it. But do we still have Director Kinter a system where somebody can come in and apply for their permit at a desk?
We don't have that yet, um, but we're getting there. So our next move is to 412 Boulevard of the Allies um slated for the spring 2022, and when we reopen, we will have moved away from the old system where you would have to go to uh maybe dummy's counter and then zoning's counter and then PLI's counter and stand in three different lines for your development process. We will have one counter, the One-Stop PGH counter um where we can consolidate that intake and um customers can have a more streamlined process.
I'm so glad to hear you say that, Director Kinter, because in voting for, you know, the sale of the property at 412, you know, that was a requirement. It was before you as Director Kennedy, I believe, and I said, we still want a desk where people can come in. There are still a lot of people out there, believe it or not, who aren't using modern technology and would like to actually see and talk to a person with their plan or their plans and get their approval or disapproval at the desk. So I just want to make sure that's always available and that it's going to be up and running. So as I understand right now, we have no place where you can go and apply in person, but uh once we get 412 underway, then we will have a desk, just as they always did. They could come downtown if they wish. Is that right?
Correct.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new paper, Bill 2074.
Bill 2074 Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in Into the Publicly Owned Properties in the 18th Ward Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County Located at the Southwest Corner of Creaseway and Pedro Way, Council District Number 3.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2075.
Bill 2075 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and Armani Christian Community Development Corporation or a Related Entity for the Cell of Block 10P Lots 25, 26, and 27 in the 5th Ward of the City Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. Bill 2076.
Bill 2076 Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest in Into the Following Publicly Owned Properties in the 5th Ward Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County Block 10K Lot 94, 95, 95A, 95B, 96, and 99 Located on the West Side of Ilmore Street Between Wiley and Webster Avenues on the East Side of Worcester Street Between Wiley and Webster, uh, Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2077.
Bill 2077 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and Fifth and Dinwiddie Development LLC or a Related Entity for the Cell of Block 11E Lots 19, 20, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 68, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 65A, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, and 85 Being Formerly Designated as Blocks 11E Lots 81, 82, and 85 in the 3rd Ward, 6 Council District.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second. Oh, I can't second now, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Lovell, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to comment since you've had three consecutive bills here with a great deal of transfers and some of them look like some really exciting projects like the Crawford Grill Project um and this one here on Fifth and Dinwiddie. I think I did get briefed on it, but I'm less familiar and it's a great number of parcels and I just thought you might want to just share with us any good news.
Sure. The first, the one regarding the Crawford Grill, um Franco Harris and a number of other individuals are looking to hopefully in the near future begin reviving and bringing back to life the Crawford Grill. These are the parcels around it so that if and when they can actually move forward, we'll have the additional parcels around it to support that development either by potentially adding an addition onto the building, potentially using it as parking. We don't know yet, but it will be part of the larger development. And then at the Fifth and Dinwiddie is a larger residential mixed income residential development that we've been working on for some time now with a developer uh bridging the gap. Um, that would take up, if you know where, at the bottom of Fifth and Dinwiddie, there used to be a public works uh facility on the right-hand side if you were looking up Dinwiddie, and the development would be on both sides of the street. So there'd be a building A and a building B, and so this is transferring the properties so that development can move forward. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. Bill, it's uh 2078.
Bill 2078 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and Allegheny Land Trust for the Cell of Block 75L in the 27th Ward, Council District Number 1.
Motion to approve.
Second, brief discussion?
Sure.
Yes, this is uh in the Brighton Heights area uh going down towards Woods Run and the community's been working on um a plan with Allegheny Land Trust to um uh, you know, turn this into a a park and a green space and uh it's something that they've been, this is a site of an old hospital, the old St. John's Hospital. And uh so this is, you know, community supported and they're uh very eager to move this along and and see this uh this uh development take place.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 2079.
Bill 2079 Resolution Approving Execution of a Dee Buy-In Between the URA and the City for the Cell of Block 88H Lot 136 in the 14th Ward, Frick Park Expansion, Council District 5.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2080.
Bill 2080 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract by Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and Garfield Highlands LP in the 10th Ward, 11th of the, well, in the 10th and 11th Wards of the City, Council District 9.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 You oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2082.
Bill 2082 Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in Into the Vacated Right-of-Way Adjourning the Publicly Owned Properties in the 21st, 21st Ward of the City Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County is Block 22F Located at 1241 Conkle Avenue, 1237 Conkle Avenue, California Avenue Between Conkle and Dahlway, 1229 Conkle Avenue, 1227 Conkle Avenue, Dahlway Between Conkle Avenue and California Avenue, 1937 and 1935 Setwood Street and Setwood Street at California Avenue respectively, Council District Number 6.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2083.
Bill 2083 Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in Into the Following Publicly Owned Properties in the 25th and the 26th Ward of the City Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County North Side of Bright Street Between Brighton Road and North Charles Street, 511 Chester Avenue and South Side of Chester Avenue, West of Holyoke Street, Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Any, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2084.
Bill 2084 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and Hometown Real Estate and Affiliates of PNC Bank for the Cell of Block 1H Lot 234 and 35 in the 2nd Ward, Council District 6.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second discussion.
Thank you. I um have um been talking to some members about this and additionally um members and staff at the URA and even, it's been a little while, but many weeks ago now, uh with um uh members of the administration at PNC because of um preservationist concerns around the skinny building, which is the city's, I'm sorry for the background noise, the um the second um skinniest building in in the world, we're told. Um, it's got its own Wikipedia page and you can go to see it. Um, I am hoping that we can um find an agreement where we don't sell the entirety of the property to PNC, um but that they've agreed in theory to partner with a preservation organization. Um, and I would love to see it um have uh at council um table stronger enforcement on preservation. Um, and this um disposition does not include um those guarantees for the public. Um, and I'm told that Councilwoman Lovell has something to add, so I'll defer.
Sure. Well, I would, I would add that the guarantees for the public are on the URA side. So on the URAs, um, on our, in our resolution, when we were moving this forward, we put in place a 99-year covenant um with PNC where they are actually not allowed to demolish it, and even if they ever sold the building, they would not be allowed to demolish it. Um, they have to maintain the facades. They cannot re redo the building. They have to maintain them as currently is. They have to bring them up to up to date. Um, there was also, and I was trying to pull it up, um, also as a condition precedent to closing, PNC had to, has to enter into an agreement with a third-party preservation partner to provide guidance and assistance on preservation activities for that, for the building itself. So there, and there's more. I couldn't find it all in time, but there are a number of covenants that I can certainly get and provide to council on the URAs and on what PNC can and cannot do with this building. But the intent is to actually preserve it as the world-class skinny building as we know it now.
I know I'm not supposed to respond, but yeah, I, right, it's a, just to, I'm glad you clarified that, but my, my wish is that we carry those, just those covenants over here and they're not here.
I'm okay. We can um, we can certainly amend the bill on Tuesday to provide the language that I just read to be a part of our resolution as well.
Yeah, I think would provide comfort to a lot of of interested parties. Um, and so I'd be happy to just, we can talk about that um this week.
Okay. I'll get Madam Clerk to language, and our meeting is on Monday, excuse me. Any further discussion?
Uh, thank you. That's all I have. No, I also have to say thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. I was going to ask if you would please share the the covenant with council, but making it part of the resolution, which I agree with Councilwoman Gross on, is the perfect uh avenue to pursue. So thank you. And why are we having a meeting next Monday?
It's a budget, the mayor's.
Oh, budget, uh, mayor presents his budget next Monday. Okay, perfect. Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. And thank you, Councilwoman.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 You oppose, bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 2085.
Bill 2085 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and San Kofa Group for a related entity for the Cell of Blocks 10P and 165 in the 5th Ward of the City Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Again.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2086.
Bill 2086 Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Cell of Land Between the URA and Steel City Squash or a Related Entity for the Cell of Various Blocks and Lots in the 12th Ward, Council District 9.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, bill is recommended. Bill 2087.
Bill 2087 Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a Quick Claim Deed and Any Other Necessary or Appropriate Documents, Agreements, and Instruments Convaying as is All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in the 24th, 24th Ward of the City to the URA for Consideration for $1 each contingent upon the Mayor and Director of Finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA related to this initial conveyance and further setting for the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of this property to third parties, Council District 1.
Motion to approve with discussion, Councilman?
Second.
Did I get a second? I couldn't hear.
Yes.
Second.
Great. I just wanted to defer to Councilman Wilson because I know he wanted, I thought, wanted to speak to this project.
This is uh community-driven. This is uh Troy Hill citizens. They're gonna um work with us on a RFP. This actually relates to the other bill uh previous week.
Do you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, bill is recommended. Last bill is Bill 2101.
Bill 2101 Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code of Ordinances in Multiple Locations with Provisions Related to Lead Safety and Mitigation in Order to Reduce and Thereby Mitigate the Health Risk of Exposure of City Residents and Particularly Young Children to Lead Hazards.
Um, I'll first say motion to approve. Our intent is to hold. That motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Like so, um, I'll just say, I was surprised that this was under Intergovernmental Affairs and not Land Juice. Um, I'm just not sure why, why it's there, but maybe because there are sections about other, uh, I don't know if we kept the sections that were about other governments or other water companies or something, but um I know we've had a lot of discussion about this and I know that um as cosponsors, we are still working out with so many versions of um input from City Law Department, from activists and Get the Let Out group, um, our own PLI department, and so I'm supportive of holding while we continue to work on the language. I wanted to see if any of the other cosponsors wanted to speak to it.
Thank you. Any, Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, and I am in favor of holding the bill for one week as well. We um, as you heard at public comment today, we do have some additional um details to work out in the bill. um, details to work out in the bill that are really, really important and, um, we're not quite there yet. So, I support holding it for one week, but I do want to thank everyone who has been involved up to this point, including the Get the Let Out Coalition and, um, Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Wilson and Councilman O'Connor and the Law Department and Director Kinter from P L I, um, and the mayor's office. So, thank you to, to everyone who's put in a lot of time over the last two years and, um, continue to discuss and hammer out the details.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
I don't think I made the motion to hold one week, can I get a second?
Yeah.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
It will be held one week. On that exhaust our agenda, we do have some meeting announcements. On Wednesday, November third at one P M, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill eighteen eighty-five as it relates to the renaming of Roberto Clemente Drive to Roberto and Vera Clemente Drive. Speaker registration will close at eleven thirty A M Wednesday morning. To register, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four-one-two, two-five-five, twenty-one, thirty-eight. Also, on Thursday, November fourth at ten A M, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill eighteen sixty-seven as it relates to the residential parking permit program. Speaker registration will close at nine A M Thursday morning. To register, fill out the sign-up form on council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four-one-two, two-five-five, two-one, three-eight. Next week, council will hold our regular meeting on Monday, November eighth at ten A M and our standing committee meeting on Tuesday, November ninth at ten A M. And then lastly, but certainly not least, we all want to collectively say congratulations to Ms. Kim Clark Baskin, our assistant clerk, who received the mayor's employee of the month award last Friday. We want to thank her for her service, not only to the council, but to all the residents of the city. So, congratulations and thank you. With that, if there's nothing else from members, we'll need a motion to, uh, excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.